School district board directors order. Roll call McKenna.
Michelle Murphy. Heather Ridgeway. Sharon Barthma. Barry Berkland.
Here.
Rick McDaniel.
Here.
Ryan Meyer.
Here.
Jim Slenson.
Here.
We have no visitors. Do we have any communication that did not? Was communicated in a different way?
Nothing for me, McKenna?
Nope. Any amendments to the agenda?
No.
Okay, motion to approve the agenda submitted?
So moved.
Second, Gary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, same thing. Okay, on the consent items. Motion to approve the consent items?
I'll make a motion.
Rick, second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Close. Okay, moving on to reports. Report of independent auditor.
Hey, Teresa, how are we gonna work this up?
I just sent Rochelle a message to say that we're ready. She was gonna call. I said if she didn't chime in right away, I'd just give her a call, so I'm gonna.
Okay. She with the bros the way they are. She's there. She's coming in telephonic. Rochelle?
Yeah.
All right, you're live and on the air on KWL.
Oh, we are so excited.
We're ready.
Okay. But I found the financial statements were barely presented and issued unmodified opinions on them, which is the best possible opinion and the actual school's opinion that we discussed last year. The audit was conducted in accordance with government auditing standards, which requires that I identify and assess the risks of material statements, financial statements, and then design and perform audit procedures in response to those risks. Those procedures include things like collecting a sample of transactions and testing those transactions for proper approval and proper recording. I selected transactions in the student activity funds, travel expenses, including mileage, credit card statements, payroll as well as several other areas. And I found all transactions that were selected to be properly approved, coded, and recorded. I also am required to obtain an understanding of internal controls, such as office procedures, staff duties, and processes for reviewing and approving bills and invoices, although the audit does not express an opinion on the effectiveness of internal controls. There was a segregation of duties finding in the report due to the size of the office. But I did observe duties appear to be segregated as much as possible, with Teresa reviewing and approving the work of other staff in the office. And then Teresa's work is being reviewed and approved by the board and Dr. Fraser when possible. In the audit report, you'll see that the total revenue, total expenditures were very similar to last year. There's a budget versus audit for actual schedule in the report. And total revenue was approximately 530 million over budget, and total expenditures were approximately 2.5 million under budget. And we took expense approximately 1.4 million in federal dollars since the year '22. When expenditures of federal dollars exceed 750,000, a federal audit is required. And a federal audit is an audit of the district's compliance with the compliance requirements over the various federal programs. And I'm required to test federal expenditures covering at least 40% of the total federal expenditure. And the district receives most of the federal dollars in the child nutrition program and the American Rescue Plan for elementary and secondary school relief or ESTER fund. And this ESTER is a new program. It's considered higher risk, so that's the program that I selected for testing. But in a federal audit, I select samples of transactions that have been recorded in the ESTER accounts and test those transactions for proper approval, that the expenses are in a proper use of the federal funds, and that other compliance requirements have been met. And I observed all transactions that were tested or were selected appeared to be proper use of funds, and I noted no noncompliance. And lastly, I tested and reviewed the district's records for several Code of Iowa compliance requirements, and those are found in the last couple pages of the report. I found everything to be in compliance with the code except for there was a variance in the certified enrollment that was discovered by the Department of Ed. And there was a deficit of unrestricted net position in government funds, and that's primarily due to the effects of Gatsby 68, which I think that was implemented in like 2015. So, and I guess that's some of what I had.
Hey, Rochelle, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it sounds like you're saying pretty much there's a clean bill of health. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Rochelle? Okay, Rochelle, you're gonna write us up again because of the size of our business office. That it's.
Right.
And would it make a difference if our business office staff just put on weight? I love it.
I don't know if you can even talk amongst of that.
What you take a shot at?
No. Well, it's not a reflection on their duties or their performance. It's just the fact that there just aren't enough people to segregate all the duties. From what I've seen, does a wonderful job.
Thank you for your time and your great report that you provided us tonight.
Thank you.
Rochelle is working hard at getting that final report out. We're sorry we didn't have a paper copy in your hands. She's trying to get that copy, and we will not be approving the audit report tonight because she does not have the final draft for you. So, otherwise, we'd have to approve it twice. The first time would be pointless.
Time to do taxes anyway.
Okay, great, thank you.
She's gone.
Yeah, she's off. She didn't hear that comment about doing taxes. She's probably working on it tonight.
All right, Teresa's up next with her mid-year budget report.
Okay, so December 31st puts us halfway through the fiscal year, so that we just like to meet every year around this time just to review where we're at. Make sure we don't have any surprises at the end of the year. Oh, it's not touching here.
Wednesday, we're gonna do that meeting.
Oh, yeah, I have a mark down the figure. What, 12:45?
3:45.
3:45.
I got it. Well, maybe in the high school conference.
I'll be there.
You tell his wife, he'll definitely be there. It'll be a way to get him out of the house.
Forty. Ah ha, there we go.
I've got an appointment set up for now.
We got the technology piece down, so now we're ready.
We're 3:45.
I'll have to come and eat. No, that's kidding.
3:45.
I had it now for, I just guessed four.
We're good?
We'll give him a second. Are you ready, Gary?
What?
We're waiting for you. Are you ready?
I'm good.
Perfect, good deal. So I always like to start with the general fund. This is really, this is the dollars that represent who we are. It's the teachers, the parents in the classroom, lights, transportation fuel, just any of these today expenses come out of here. These columns way off to the right side here represent the current fiscal year. This is where we're at, how much money was brought in. By the end of the year, we're looking at a little over $10 million that we bring in total. No big surprises here. Most of the revenue we bring in is driven by enrollment. You can kind of see that would be your local plus your state has been pretty steady all across here. That signifies that it's been steady. The one thing I think is a little interesting, it's a little difficult to see on here, but we have had a bit of a shift from local to state revenues. So part of what the state's been doing is they've been passing property tax relief legislation. So when they come out at budget time and they say how much they've improved their budget for public education and how many more dollars they're sending, them sending us more money doesn't necessarily mean that we actually have more to spend.
Yeah, and Teresa, doesn't Governor Reynolds have a television commercial? She's running just about every other commercial where she's saying they've given more than a billion dollars to schools in the last 10 years. But isn't that that property tax relief? So they've actually took property tax money away from us and gave us money. So it was robbing Peter to pay Paul, and it wasn't actually new revenues to the schools.
That is exactly what I'm talking about. So when you hear those big numbers, when you start to dive into them, that does not mean that we are getting additional money to spend. It's just that it's coming from the state instead of from the county through the property tax levies.
And don't politicians have an interesting way of spinning the truth?
Indeed, yes, yes. Whatever fits the both, I guess. The other thing that's kind of interesting to point out, you can see this would be what our standard amount of federal funding would be when we look at 2020. That's when COVID hit, but it was really from the time that shutdown happened, when they actually got packages out to help with funding. There wasn't a lot of time to collect there. So then we see the increased federal funding here. We're still at about 3/4 of a million in the current year. Next year, we still have that. Then that funding expires, so we're going to see that cliff, where we're going to need to make sure that we're staying within what we can afford. Uh oh. It's not updating.
It doesn't like you tonight.
It does not. I don't know what's happening. It was just working. I'll go stand by it. Is that what fixes it, when you stand here? Well, if this isn't going to work, I have some paper copies I could just hand out.
I find slapping it helps.
We had positions that we have brought on with federal money for COVID. Are those expired as well? Would we find a way to keep those people on? We've got one more year. This is the second year of three. So we're planning on those positions remaining in effect this coming year as well, but then we will have some tough choices to make, especially with our financial level.
Well, you know what? You can see it easily that way anyway. I wasn't well, so you might not know this, but the first year I ever went to do this, I had a similar glitch and I looked like a deer in the headlights. I was, yeah, absolutely panicked because I didn't have a backup. Let me make sure I've got enough here first. You're welcome.
Wear the belt and the suspenders, right Teresa?
What?
Wear the belt and the suspenders?
Yes.
That's a mental question, actually, probably.
Yeah, I've got my hair.
Oh, it popped right up there. There it is.
We'll try, but I can't.
Cause I looked at my pigs. I said, my gosh.
I like my visuals because I talk with my hands. I feel like a weather forecaster when I'm up here. Okay, so moving on to the expenditures from the general fund. Our spending continues in an upward trend, and that's real typical. Unless we are taking measures to actually reduce funding, we're always going to have increases for salaries, benefits. This year, we're seeing more with the open enrollment and the special education expenses as well. Special education, we are seeing more both for, well, for resident students, students attending, and also for students who are attending somewhere else. A lot of the open enrollment increases that we see, it's mostly from the kindergarten class. We have more kindergartners. So kids who have never actually been attending here, but we need to go ahead and pay those too. What we end up seeing through there though, excuse me, is those expenses hit right now in this year, but we don't actually get that spending authority until the end of the year, and we don't get the cash until next year. So this shortfall is actually not, it's not as scary as it looks there. In prior years, we were bringing in a lot of additional cash reserves. Now this year, the state limits how much you can bring in for extra cash, so we're not bringing, we're just not bringing in as much. Next year, like I said, we'll have that backlog from the special ed and such that'll catch up to it. Not spending authority. That's cash is king everywhere else. Spending authority is king in the school. So I just want you to know that that is not actually alarming. End of the year, we're still going to have about $2 million in the general fund. That's a healthy amount of cash to have on hand. One thing that is kind of interesting, so interest rates have been really low the past couple of years. Interest revenue is considered a miscellaneous revenue, adds directly to your spending authority. Last year, we only had $5,000 in interest in our general fund all year. This year, we're going to be ending, assuming rates stay where they are, at about $95,000. That's enough to cover a teacher benefits and a little extra. So that's a big deal for us.
Banks need to pay more.
What's that?
The bank needs to pay more interest, that's all.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's been rising, and I think the Federal Reserve in February is gonna raise it another quarter of a percentage, but, you know, we'll see where that goes.
Well, make no mistake, there are school districts out there that we don't believe in that here because it's tax dollars. That means we've got to take it away from our taxpayer. But there are school boards out there that like to keep an enormous cash balance, because then they actually increase the revenues that way.
Yep. And that's part of the reason the state will limit. Like, we ended last year with quite a bit of cash. So now when we go to set the budget here in April for the following year, we will be limited as to how much cash we can bring in. Because if you're not using it, why are you asking people to send it? So that's, so every school is different, like every? Yeah, it's actually formula-driven as far as how much cash reserve you can bring in. So it's based off of your expenditures from, it ends up being two years prior, and your current cash on hand. So like in the current year, we had quite a bit of cash two years ago, well, brought in about 850,000 in cash reserve a couple of years ago because we were so shy on cash at the time. But then we ended with a larger balance, which then hits us this year where we couldn't bring in as much.
Yeah, the formula went into effect about 12 years ago, I would guess.
Okay.
And, but until before that, why then, there were districts that were really ballooning up that balance just where they could earn in interest rate money.
Which, I mean, when you think about that, it kind of makes sense. If you can have money in the bank and you can bring in that interest revenue and bring in enough to cover a position. Budgets are tight, why the heck would you not if you can?
Well, if you're an individual, you'd like that because you want to have a cash reserve to earn more interest so you have a nice retirement.
Absolutely.
But you know what? We're not supposed to run a school like that.
Right, right.
We need protection against calamities and things that we can anticipate, but we should not be building up excess.
Exactly.
And I know school districts around, I can name them, who have huge amounts of cash revenues, that they have this huge cash reserves, and everybody picks on them because of it, but guess what? It really gives them a lot of flexibility.
Great. Okay, so you can see here about 75% of our budget is salaries and benefits. We're a very labor-intensive industry. It's the teachers, the parents, everyone you see in the buildings. That's where most of our budget goes. We do have our purchase services is pretty high too. So purchase services are really still people. They're just people who are employed outside of our district. So that's like our tuition that we pay up to NIAC for concurrent enrollment, special education services, so still people. There's not really a ton in any other one area. Supplies is 5%. That's a fairly decent chunk, but that includes all of our transportation fuel, electricity, water, along with the things you might think of, the pencils and pens and paper.
And as we look down the road with some of the budget challenges we have before us, this is one of the paradoxes we have. We don't want to take the human resources away from the kids, but look what percentage of the budget is made up of all those other things.
There's not a lot to cut. And like this AEA flow through, we never even see those dollars. Those go directly to the AEA. So once you take that out, you know, that's just another chunk.
And when you're talking about the other things that don't apply, we're talking about the gas for the buses, the heat for the buildings, to keeping the lights on, and it's hard to cut back on those. Although Teresa does have an ambition that someday we invest in solar panels.
That's true.
What about our windmills? Could we have some windmills?
You know, I don't hate the idea of windmills, but just I was talking to someone who kind of made me think, you know, maybe that's not the best route to go. Was it you?
The future is solar panels.
No, I think so. Solar panels, you pay for it all out of your capital projects, and then you cut down on your electrical bills and. I'm holding on to that one. We're gonna get the capital projects balance back up, and I think then we're gonna convince you. Did you have any questions about the general fund? Next up is the management fund. Now, we are very restricted as to what we can use these dollars for. This is our liability insurance. It's our unemployment, early retirement. We saw about a $45,000 increase in our insurance premiums this year. That's about 30%. It's a combination of factors though. One, Iowa has been hit with some really big disasters. Think about the derecho that went through. Those things increase our premiums. The other thing that we are seeing is we've done a lot of construction, so we are insuring a much higher value, and everything has gone up in value on top of it. We've been continuing the trend where we are bringing in less in revenue. Again, current year, we're bringing in less in revenue than what we're actually paying for out of that fund. If you go back to 2018, we had a balance of about $1.2 million. That's really hefty from what we need on hand. This year, we're gonna end at about $6.80, which is just a much better spot for us to be sitting. Again, why would you be taking in the cash if you don't actually need it?
Yeah, if our expenditures annually are $220,000, we're gonna probably continue. Teresa and I next month go to another, our budget workshop, do our budget planning, and we'll probably come up with another deficit scenario just to spend down that balance, because we don't need that much cash on it.
Exactly. Did you have any questions about the management fund?
We discussed this before and fast.
Yep.
Do we add your notes while we're trying to break it down a little?
Okay, capital projects. So this is a combination of both our PEPAL, so that's the property plants and equipment levy, so property tax, and the SAFE fund. SAFE would be that one penny sales tax. It is still expense-heavy. Again, here's where we are here at date. This is the total budget. We expect this to stay expense-heavy right now. First off, we've got our construction projects. About $850,000 still came out of this fund in the current year. The other thing is that this fund is also what pays for those revenue bonds that we took out in 2021. So we transfer money into the debt service fund, so that's what makes that so high. At the end of the year though, we're still going to have about $1 million sitting here, so that is a very good safe number. And we're not going to want to start building something new or tearing down walls with a million dollars, but it gives us plenty to feel comfortable. Any questions on that?
Oh, and Teresa, we've got another expense for those, for that money.
We have what?
We have another expense for that money, by the way.
Okay.
The heavy snows today overloaded our skid loader, and we've got a major repair coming up.
Oh, no. Wait, new skid loader or major repair?
Major repair. Major, major.
No, because major repair means general fund. New skid loader.
Oh, good, repair it then.
We'll have to see how major it is.
Yeah, well, I think we're talking a monster part that goes in there, which I think we could come out of that.
We, if we can show it extends a lot, we'll worry about that later. It probably extends the life.
One of the paradoxes of this is sometimes it's cheaper to buy equipment out of the sales tax than it is to repair the equipment out of the general fund. And so we try to squeeze that whenever we can, but you know, we're not gonna violate the rules, but we're gonna see how close we can squeeze that.
Debt service fund. There's really not much happening here. We just talked about capital projects sends money over here, and then when those bonds, when we're due to make a payment, it just comes out of this fund. That's really all that happens there. So we, you know, we'll spend pretty much everything that goes in there. Moving on to the activity fund. This screen is set up just a little bit differently, so these are here to date for prior years, and now these are where the years ended and where we expect to end. We're actually running a pretty similar surplus to what we've been having in recent years. The difference here though is the last couple of years, you might remember, we ended up doing a transfer from the general fund into the activity fund. That covered our loss in revenue because of COVID. This year, we are running the same kind of surplus, but that does not account for an additional transfer from the general fund. So this is a really great position. Now, what happened is that would have caused that? The state, we haven't had any law changes, but the state came out with a new 88-page document of guidance on the school activity funds. And in prior years, they have always said your officials have to be paid from the activity fund because that's what they're serving. And now they've said, you know what? If you want to pay them from general, that's fine. So we shifted $20,000, $25,000 worth of expenses from here over to the general fund. Now, keep in mind, that does hit, it's our general fund, hits those instructional dollars. But it really has allowed us to make some gains in the activity fund so that when we have program needs, we can address those.
And what's going on is there's a shortage of people who want to take the grief and abuse of being oppressed. So those people that are willing to do it say, you know, there are school districts that'll pay me more to wreck this game. All right, do you want to pull me up? So those mounting expenses are killing us.
Yeah. That's, I guess, since I've started working at a school at least, that's always been the buzz when you go to conventions and such, is everyone's trying to figure out how to make the activity fund solvent. And I really think that this new viewpoint is going to do that for a lot of school districts. So as we get further into the seasons, we may find that there are more things that we need that drive both of these bars up. The boosters are absolutely fantastic support. So say we need uniforms, they almost always, and at this point probably always, contribute 75% of that cost. So if those things happen, it'll be close to a net zero effect just between what's coming in and what they contribute already. Were there any questions about the activity fund? So then we have the nutrition fund. We are still running a surplus, which is really great. We, you know, you compare last year, and it looks like it's way down, but the thing is, is last year is actually an anomaly. There was federal funding that covered lunches and breakfast for every single student. That's not the case anymore, so we do see a drop there in the revenues. The other thing is, is food costs are high right now. Food costs are high, supplies are high. We're still using some disposable items that we wouldn't have been using pre-pandemic. All in all though, anytime you're covering your costs, it's not meant to be a revenue or a profit generating situation. So this is still great that we're covering all of those expenses. I always have the caveat, when the actuarial comes back, we don't know what's going to happen with the OPEB, so that's the cost of benefits after people retire. We don't know. We don't know what's going to happen with that liability yet, so that can really swing. That's kind of it there. The revenues are based off of our average meal counts though, and the federal reimbursement rate and what we expect to receive from families during that timeframe too.
Are the collections in the nutrition fund been adequate?
Are you here talking about negative lunch accounts?
I am.
It's been rough. It's been really rough. I don't know exactly where that deficit balance is now. I ran it a couple of weeks ago and it was probably around the $8,000, $9,000 and I know it's higher. So it, yeah.
And with this, other school districts on the news tonight, talking about that same issue?
Yes.
In connection with the proposed changes to SNAP funding?
Okay.
How it's going to affect kids and it's going to trickle down to affect schools, which is even more.
Yeah. It's hard and I think too, people kind of got used to having, to not having to budget for that expense and now it's back as a household expense. And I just think people are struggling in general and we see it.
Is there still the percentage of free and reduced that we could need that?
We don't need it. So here's.
Right. I mean, we didn't need it, but.
This is what's really hard about that. When you just look at our percentage of free and reduced students, we should make it. The problem is, is they do not count all of your free and reduced students. They only count the ones who are considered a direct cert. So what that means is they've been certified already through some other state program and then the state sends us those names. They say these people qualify because they're on SNAP or because they're on Medicaid or whatever that qualifier is. So when people qualify just based off the application, it doesn't count towards that community eligibility provision. It's really, it puts you in a tough spot because.
Don't get the expense.
I feel like we should probably qualify. If they qualify, we qualify and it should count. Yeah. I would agree with that. Do you have any other questions about the nutrition fund there or? So where does this put us then? So when we, everything we've looked at right now is based off of our line item budget. So that's what I use to kind of see where our total costs are to really control the budget. The line item budget is not actually the one that we give to the public and that we adopt. The adopted one is what we run in the paper. And really when we do that, we're telling the public, we will not spend more than this amount without talking to you about it first. So when we compare to the adopted budget, we're actually quite a bit under in most areas. Instructional, support, non-instructional, those are all doing great. I'm not one bit worried about the adopted budget. Where we could end up with some trouble though is the other category. We had some big construction costs that crossed fiscal years. It's not anything that's hurting us from a financial standpoint, but we may have to amend because of that. Any other questions, Papa?
But that, well, do I understand that only affects the capital funds probably?
Correct.
Not the general fund?
Correct. Yes. And actually, most of that money is, it's all money that we said we're going to spend. It's just where it fell as far as fiscal year so.
Any other questions for Teresa? Thank you. It was all thanks for doing a wonderful job, even there.
Thanks so much.
Back in the office. Okay, English language learner program?
They are not here tonight. The weather also, we will not hear from the, because it might really hear from the junior class.
Okay. School improvement, Kelly, is that you?
I think so.
Okay, you're up.
James, can I sit by you?
You sit with him.
At your own risk. I don't talk as much with my hands, so I wasn't going to say.
Do you want Teresa to stand up there?
I do have quite a few bar graphs too.
So I presented similar last year in terms of student population, our makeup in terms of gender, minority status, that kind of piece. There's a little bit later on about special ed populations and those kind of pieces. But for the majority, you can see that for our 711 population, three hundred and thirty-five students, 52% are male and 31% of them are minorities. And that's chosen by the parent when they register the student. If you've ever registered a student, here you, you know, that form that they click. So that is our, that's going to be our control group for what I'll show you. And then I can share this with you if you'd like. You can see I have a breakdown of all the data and what it looks like. For every single course we offer at Belmont Fleming, I went through to determine what percentage were minorities, what percentage are male, what percentage are female, and then highlighted those that were disproportionate compared to our control group. That's in that presentation, so you can see it if you choose. So as we go through, just some things that jumped out. Last year, a major concern of ours were our music program. They were both predominantly white and predominantly female. In terms of activities, we had suggested at the time, bringing in more interpreters and some of those fifth and sixth grade programs, songs sung in different languages and things like that. L orientation, I, we managed to make most of those happen and we made a lot of progress. So in terms of minorities, last year, the orange is our control group. Actually, our percentage for minority did not change. It was 30%, 31% last year, still this year. Last year, this is as close as we got to the control group, about 20%. This year, I think it's 30%, 29% or 30%. So we actually increased in terms of our minority population in our control group. We did not make much gains in choir in terms of females versus males. Anyone have suggestions on how to get more gentlemen to go out for choir? We are all ears. But we didn't make much progress in that field, but what I was most concerned about is getting minorities to participate in our program, to get those elective credits and those kinds of things. And they did. Band, basically about the same. You can see we made a little progress in terms of evening out men, males and females in band, but otherwise it pretty much stayed right with our control group. So at this time, we're really not changing much of our action plan. Seems to be good to go.
Can we get normal sister guys to go out for choir?
Extra credit?
Something.
Something. That would be great if we could. Last year, another major concern of ours is that our math courses, our slower paced math courses were disproportionately male and minority students. Again, students that eventually cannot take those pre-calc, calc, stats courses because they just took those slower paced math courses. Algebra 1A and 1B over two years versus algebra 1 over 1. And again, that just means that you can't get to the point in a four-year high school career up to those higher classes. We made some progress. So in terms of minorities, again, this is our control group. You can see there were a lot more minorities than our control group of 31% last year, taking a slower pace. There are less this year. It's evened out more. They're moving up and they're taking some of the more faster courses, which is great. And then also more males have signed up from some of the more higher level courses. So this actually going down is a good thing, meaning it's closer to our control group. Evening out more closer to what our student population. So with that said, again, really no action plan to change what we're kind of doing because what we're doing is working. It's going to take time. I mean, we're talking about a four-year high school career and, you know, you slowly make progress each year. They move up because they can't go from algebra 1A to calculus. They still have to have a couple of years in there of some math, but that's excellent. So see. Last year, another major area of concern, our honors, our more advanced English and our advanced math courses together. We're again disproportionately white and female. Some progress in terms of males versus females. We got closer to the control group. Part of it is with our strength of classes, we had to drop some of those higher level classes. It was hard to compare numbers. We couldn't offer an English honors 10 and 11 and still offer some of the same classes with the size of the groups we have. If you saw average class sizes of elementary versus high school, we had definitely gone up. And so we have to have more sections of things with English 9 or English 10. We can't necessarily offer more of the honors classes. So it's a little hard to say, you know, we made a little progress particularly in this department, but we also haven't been able to offer as much. So that's unfortunate. Last year, an area of concern, what if social studies elective, we're disproportionately minority male. We've made a lot of great progress. You can see it was definitely much more minority last year compared to this year. It's closer to our control group. And in terms of males, again, we got much closer to our control group. The kind of the recruitment efforts we've made have helped. But to be honest, whether they choose to take more psych and soc versus art and choir, they're taking classes they're interested in and passionate about, so that's less of a concern, but we are making great progress. In terms of our ag and shop courses, our industrial type, I should put there, again, we're disproportionately white and male. So when you look at our bar graph, unfortunately, we really didn't make any progress in the year. I can kind of show you. So when we kind of look at, you can see our action plan last year compared to this year. Last year, we really wanted to do more junior high schools with more students with more service projects, field trips, hands-on projects, things like that. Ag definitely has included junior high more and more. Junior high more and more compared to the years I've been here, it's been included more in field trips. A lot of junior high just went skiing on an FFA trip. You know, they're participating in meal cookouts for co-ops and things like that. They're definitely doing those pieces. So I'm hoping that takes some traction later on as they get into high school. And one other piece we talked about, some forced scheduling, for lack of a kind of word, forcing some of those high school students to take more ag and shop courses. We can try. You really can't force the students. Now, and Dr. Fraser, may I may not want to talk about this piece at all. We may have to make changes in our CTE strand, depending on what we can hire, for instance, Mr. Butler and things. That might encourage more kids to go out for programs, depending on what classes we can offer. So we'll kind of look at that piece later on. They talked about a J term in December and May to hook more activities and field trips. Right now, it's a lack of staffing and time really, I mean, to add a whole nother courses. I know the time frame doesn't really, people write the second. A career fair, which we definitely wanted to jump on. But as we, we have these collaborations on Thursday of our full staff. We call them, sometimes we call them data days, other kinds of PDFs. And rather than focusing on a career fair this year, we really want to focus on an activities fair. What we would like to build more is an identity to Belmont Fleming for students and usually they do that for extracurriculars. You know, if you're part of the basketball team or you're part of FFA or you're part of esports, you're building a bigger identity to Belmont Fleming. And by building that identity and having some of those eligibility standards and some of those kinds of practice schedules and things like that, they're more apt to do better in classes, keep their behavior under check, that kind of thing. So we have actually chosen to increase our activity numbers through an activities fair and get kids hooked into participating more of our extracurriculars and focusing on the career fair this year. So we're going to have an elementary activities fair. Our plan is the day of the elementary track meet. Kind of build that in with Mr. Young and then we'll also do it kind of back to school time for the junior, senior high. So rather than a career fair, we're focusing more on activities fair. It will include FFA and some of those kinds of programs, but that's what we're focusing on right now. And then increase means the CT advisory groups, guest speakers, those kinds of things. Currently occurring, and other CTE strands are going to start building up some of their coaching groups too.
How do you do that for the elementary kids with activities? Because like they're not school sponsors, right?
They're not, but we are going to encourage them to get excited about it. So Maddie Allen's actually been chanting this a lot. You know, she talks about how bringing some of those fourths and fifth and sixth graders up to see, for instance, the first half of the play during school time. Maybe we'll get them excited that in a couple of years when they get up to junior, senior high that they'll want to participate in festivities, for example. That's going to be our thinking and our drive. That if we can get kids hooked into more basketball and volleyball and things like that and getting excited about the high school kids coming over and helping with an activity or in their activity booth, that maybe they'll want to go out for BCBC and then continue on. I will say, I mean, we went from maybe four junior high girls going out for basketball to like 13, 14 kids and a lot of it was Mr. Seabiscuit every single day at lunch and Ms. Jensen every single day at lunch going up to junior high girls saying, why don't you try basketball? Why don't you try basketball? Just try it, you know? So I think the more connections we can have, whether it's through activities there and personal connections, the more we can get them to go out. I should have asked, any questions on that one? It was definitely one we didn't make the most progress, we made the least progress on, so I wanted to cover that one. And last but not least, in terms of our special ed population, they were disproportionately white. The concern there is maybe we are missing a disability if they have a language barrier as well. You know, maybe we attribute lack of academic success because of a language barrier and not because of some kind of disability. And that's always a concern. We, we really didn't make progress on that. But a lot of it, as I look at rosters from last year to this year for special ed, a lot of those L students that we might have looked at as having a disability or started testing have then moved out of the district already. So we also lost our Mosaic population, so that kind of changed our dynamic for special ed. So even though we actually lost some progress here in terms of getting closer to our control group, I think a lot of it has to do with our current enrollment compared to last year.
Where's the control group document?
This document that, I don't know if I can get back to it now. That Teresa is always kind enough to share with me. If I can get back to the beginning. So on October 1st, count date, Teresa, correct me if I'm wrong. October 1st count date, when students register, then October 1st, we do an official count. Teresa puts together this amazing document and then I beg her for it when I go to put this together and it's these current numbers. Teresa, if you want to add any more to where you get that, I don't know.
I just push a button. I, I don't know how it works. I push a button and it's really.
See, I like to push this in a button.
If I actually say tab.
Maybe. But I like how she's building it up. It sounds like I can count everyone.
That's what I was thinking.
I mean, my understanding is it comes from registration time. It gets uploaded into the system. It's part of our information system and then she can pull the report and hand it over to me so I can look at it. So you can see, like I said, down here, our minority percentage, our male, female percentage. So that's where I get that piece. And again, if you are interested in seeing class by class, it takes a few days, but we do have. I do have that year by year for you if you ever wanted to see course by course, what.
I guess the point being is the control group, we want 50% boys and we want 50% girls out for shop?
Not necessarily, but we would want it close enough to that. Technically, our student population is 53% male, 47% female. We would want as close to the control group as possible.
That's what your goal is to have.
That would be a goal of a district.
Of everybody in every class.
Absolutely. Now, what you see is, if I would have shown you, like you'll see on this document, total ninth graders, some are a little bit different than others. The actual ninth grade class right now is 55% female. So then as I look at something like science 9, which is predominantly taken by freshmen, you know, I would expect to see that 55% are female and 45% of our male taking that course. So yes, really.
That's the, that makes sense. Do we necessarily need a perfect balance? I know, but gone are the days when boys only took shop and girls only took home in. So we're looking at why they're not, is that there's a problem.
Not necessarily a problem, but a way we can encourage more girls, for example. It used to be always a question, how can we contribute more girls and how can we encourage more girls to take more math and science courses? So similar idea, how can we get to the point where we can encourage more males to take choir? How can we encourage more females to take shop?
More importantly.
Or it might be that, is there something deterrent?
Your goal is to give our students a more rounded education regardless of what their ethnic is or male or female, to give them that total rounded education.
They have the opportunity.
Yes.
The opportunity. Every kid, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. You would need to get to the point. You would need to get to the point where you hear a student say, well, I can't do choir. Like I'm a guy. Well, no, absolutely not. I mean, we need that. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Does that answer your question? So yes, our goal would be as close to the control group as possible. Any other questions for me?
No, but this is interesting to me. Like it's stuff I never would have thought about.
Yeah, I wouldn't have either up till last year. I mean, to be honest, as a gen ed, social studies teacher, we always taught seventh and ninth grade, and then every once in a while, like government, or you know, depending on the year, different elective. I had everybody. So it didn't, I didn't ever notice the difference, but until you kind of see a broader view.
Yeah.
What's family consumer science?
Bisection on here. So food classes, yeah, very here. Yep, so food's one, 33% are minorities taking the classes. And it's a 45, 55 split. So you can kind of see a plus, negative of eight percent. So it's a little bit more female dominated, but.
Pretty good balance.
But yeah, when you consider it's a few more minorities than our control group and some of those kinds of things, we're definitely getting some of those life skills, for example.
I think the biggest disappointment for me is the low minority enrollment in our ag classes. In that, that population is coming to Wright County to work ag. And yet that minority population is not really getting involved in our ag program.
I would, I mean, I will say that 50% of the ones taking metals are a minority, which is great, but the rest are pretty low. And it's a little unfair. I would hate for someone to start pointing fingers because we're not talking about a large number of students. So that kind of skews the control group slightly as well. It looks like 14, you know, you want to add all these students up to be like, what are all students taking industrial tech? But a lot of them are taking multiple classes. So a lot of these are repeat kids taking two or three classes in a day. So that kind of skews the numbers when you have a small population that you're basing your numbers off versus English nine, where every single freshman is taking this class. Or in here, the every freshman.
I looked on our computer science, 100% male.
On here?
Yeah, it is. Go down.
Go the other way. Keep going that way.
You're right. Now, keep in mind, it's five students.
I know, but it's all guys.
One of the five, you're right. Yep. Versus our Microsoft Office even split 50/50, but again, we're only talking about two people.
We're really achieving that representation.
And I saw the accounting, why, why so many more males than females? There's 13 in that class.
Very year to year.
Well, and I will say, if it's not highlighted and there is a pretty majority, I try to dig in a little bit deeper. For example, if you look at across all of her elective, it starts evening out. So she's got 70% female in one class and 50 versus 47. So it does, I look across all the electives she, Mrs. Menega offers then and try to see, at least is she getting the even outnumbered? Because it might be a schedule thing. In fact, I think, excuse me if I'm wrong, CK, I think computer science is opposite choir. I think, don't quote me, but I think computer science is opposite choir. So kind of makes more sense why there wouldn't be more females taking that class. But again, don't quote me on that one, but I'm pretty sure it's people.
Which is one of the things we look at.
Yeah, so that's why I try to make myself some notes here. Hey, don't highlight because across her elective, it evens out. Yep, absolutely. If I can't figure it out, then I might write myself a note. I can't figure out why it's disproportionate.
So this is the second year.
What's that?
Second year we're going to do it.
This is the second year. I don't know if they did it before that, when I was a classroom teacher, but this is.
I never.
No. It's a good check for us, nothing else. It's a good way to start some conversations because when we do have a whole section like this highlighted, it's good to have those conversations with teachers about what, what might be happening in their classes or what might, they might be seeing or what they might think we should be doing to encourage more kids to take the courses.
I look at that pre-calc, 30% guys, 70% women.
Yeah. And some of that is just some of our efforts to encourage more kids to move up. But again, it's kind of a process. You can't go from algebra one B to pre-calc. So we encourage them to push up faster and let's take a little time. Yeah, absolutely. Anything else for me?
It's good, good report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Absolutely, thanks. Take them off, Dr. Fraser.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming.
You bet.
President's report.
Let me call it up here and put it up on the screen so everyone can see it. All right. First thing, I just wanted to alert you to the fact that the telemedicine grant has expired. There's a Miss McDaniel at the hospital that the grant had expired. And I said, what? We just started that.
Yeah.
And I looked and it said, no, it was 2019, we got this started. Oh, okay.
It's just yesterday.
But we just don't have the undoing ability, neither the hospital nor the school, to sustain that. Admirable as the program is, it doesn't really move our mission of educating students ahead. It's a nice convenience for the family. It helps family health, helps families have access to medical appointments, but it really doesn't help us educate kids necessarily. So that's going to be, that's going to be going away and that's a disappointment. But maybe Scott the news, I think Des Moines is still struggling with their cyber attack down there. I have no idea what all of them placed, but they apparently ransomed a bunch of information from the school, student information system. And I think they're still struggling with that. But this is what we're dealing with right now. A bunch of, a bunch of attacks on schools. Glenwood, my article here, it talks about Glenwood getting hit, Lenmar, Davenport, Cedar Rapids, the name, but a few of the schools that are dealing with this. And even something went out from the Department of Education asking that, I didn't get this, but apparently several school districts received an email directly from the director of the Department of Education, asking for passwords and information. And well, it was, it looked great, but it was phony. And so that's a little of what we're dealing with. So what we're, some of the things we're doing, we're increasing the amount of time we're asking our, the number of time we're asking our employees to change their passwords. We're working on two factor authentication. And we've got some employees that, that find this annoying and say things like, well, we didn't have to use to do this. No, this is a new thing. But that's a little of what we're dealing with right now. And you probably have been hearing a lot on the news about states and organizations that are banning TikTok. This, that app does not serve us. So in support of Governor Reynolds' ban on TikTok, we're banning it here at Belmont. It won't affect a whole heck of a lot of anybody, but some, there'll be a few kids that'll want to access it on their laptops and be going, hey, what's up? So that's going on there.
I would see TikToks made during the day from that.
Have you? We, well, we even tried it. We thought we'd, I mean, Kelly even did, did one last year, which she was trying to send a message out to kids. And what was the topic of that?
It was PBIS. It was several different videos about what not, what to do and what not to do. It's like whether to, what to do in the lunch line, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate, what to do in the locker, that kind of thing. Trying to hit them where they would pay more attention. But honestly, I don't know. For lack of a better term, I didn't think I had much bang for the buck in terms of the amount of effort and learning I had to do about it.
But you didn't dance on the TikTok.
I never danced.
There you go.
That's it.
I shouldn't dance.
Yes.
I had some students do some things and act me up. And some ones are just doing some acting off of me and things, but no, I never danced. I only wanted to do that.
And I won't go through this, but I just alert you that in the spring, we do contract bargaining, and I'll let you look through these pages if you're interested. Talk a little bit, but I would call your attention to page 34 that talks a little bit about what the rate of inflation is and how that affects bargaining. Teachers are, and support staff are guaranteed by state law, a higher settlement if, they're basically guaranteed 3% if inflation is over 3%. Meanwhile, the state gave us 2.5% last year. They're giving us 2.5% this year. And when that's not even one-third of the rate of inflation, it's going to keep eating away at us and starving us.
But they can give money to scholarships.
And I'm going to, that's, that's my next rant a little bit later in this meeting.
I'll be waiting for it.
All right.
That's my report.
Any questions for Dr. Fraser? Moving on, CK, you're up next.
Okay, well, we ended this first semester a few days later than planned, but we're got second semester going and getting kids into classes. And this week's kind of been a mixed up week because it's winter form a week. Of course, we have to have all these things. So that's kind of messed our schedule up. So if you want to see teachers dance tomorrow afternoon to the pep rally, because if you have seen on TikTok rally Facebook, where they're all lined up and all of a sudden somebody pops up and they're dancing with somebody, that's happening tomorrow. So watch Facebook for that. Kelly might dance, I don't know.
I'm not dancing. I just saw on those TikToks of our.
Yeah, so that's tomorrow, coronation, all that stuff. Dance is Friday night, or no, Saturday night. We play governor tomorrow night and they'll have the cake auction and all the kinds of stuff that they do then. So that'll be fun. We, elementary and high school both have been doing their fast testing. We're about done, I'm pretty sure. They're probably about done to do marks on the owl, so he probably could just wave at us. Jazz band have done, they got second at the Triton Jazz Festival, which is great. They were supposed to go to NIAC today, but of course the weather prevented that. But they got second behind the first place team from last year. So they're sounding good and looking good. Speech goes this weekend, show choir the next. So we got lots of things coming up in the next few weeks and a month to look forward to. So shout out to our boys basketball team.
Oh, yes, I'm going to say that. 38 games after 38 games to lose and they won. And they played good that night.
They were really, really good.
Really hoping they could bump off Big Grove and their T-shirts said Wright County champions.
It was close.
It was, they cried hard.
They were, they were funny and dry.
Questions for me?
I'm playing the game. Do you go to the game?
I sit in the corner over by the shop.
Like she's a junior high girl, splitting her.
That'll be all come sit aside me on the floor. Run around in circles.
It's like a serondo, that's why I play with.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Okay, moving on to action items.
Regarding the audit report, as I mentioned earlier, that's not ready to submit or for board approval, and the enrollment projections are not ready. So I respectfully ask that we move to redistrict.
Okay.
And with that, you'll find the resolution beginning on page 35. We talked about the different districts that we had to redistrict. We started this conversation in, I think, October and then November. And, and so, but, and then the, the service that we employed drafted, drafted the resolutions during the November, December, and they're ready for board approval. So we've got the resolution, and let me connect the dots here for you. First off, you'll see the resolution beginning on page 35 there if you look up on the screen. And then it refers to the exhibits that will be attached that are the link of descriptions for each of the five districts that are, that exist within our school election. And that, those descriptions correspond to the map that the board previously said was met their expectations and approval. So, and then this worksheet, this last is a worksheet. And I don't know why it says Black New Hartford on this second page. Actually, the numbers are accurate, so just.
Well, I know, I love the numbers, though the numbers look good.
Yeah, the numbers are right. I looked at that a couple of times and said, numbers are right, just Black New Hartford. I don't think that's it. But we then complete this and turn that into the state. So any questions on this before I take you back to the resolution? Well, if that, that's the case, then I'll ask the board to approve the resolution that begins on page 35. We'll move. Second.
Get a roll call vote for the resolution, McCann.
Sharon Barkema, Gary Berkland.
Yes.
Rick McDaniel.
Yes.
Ryan Meyer.
Yes.
Michelle Murphy.
Yes.
Heather Ridgeway.
Yes.
Jen Slusky.
Yes.
Resolution pieces. Moving on to personal job postings and hiring plan.
This is my biggest concern this spring, is the hiring season that's upon us right now. As we've been talking for several years now, we're in a teacher shortage, nationwide teacher shortage. And people are leaving the profession, but they're not coming into it at nearly the same rate. And we've known there are a number of shortage areas, but it's getting worse. And this is just, the graph up there on the page is just, just a current data. This is last week's. Grundmeier Leadership Search helps schools hire administrators. And you can see how over just, just over the last couple of years, how numbers are plummeting in terms of school administrators available for school jobs here in Iowa. And that's just an example of what's going on. Shortages by different type, look how the, the numbers are exploding up in these different areas. And, and you can see the big areas, as you look at this, are special education, career and tech ed, and science. And by the way, folks, we've had resignations in special ed, career and tech ed, and science. So this is a, this is a big concern for us. The Iowa Department of Education for years has put up a page on their website where they list shortage areas. They listed it for this year, but they didn't need to. And it's all there. They could just put all the, all areas.
Everyone.
Education.
Yeah. I mean, English shortage, social studies shortage, physical education shortage.
History's good.
Pardon me?
History's not on there.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
This is all social studies.
Very last one, bottom of the screen, two blocks by that page number. There, all social studies areas. That means geography, government, all of them.
That's crazy.
Yep. This is what we're dealing with this year. So how do we remain competitive? Because I'm of the opinion that, I'd always believed that small schools in Iowa were closed because we just continued to see declining enrollment to the point where we'd have so few students, we couldn't sustain ourselves anymore. I really think this is going to, closure of small schools is going to be accelerated by the fact that schools can't stay credited.
They keep the teachers.
And how do we position ourselves to be in a position to do this? And as I mentioned, why then, we're trying to hire special education, career and tech ed, and science right now. And the board had previously, I've, I've got a good friend that's down. Oh, by the way, this is in our handbook. The board approved this about three years ago. The board said, said it reserved the right to pay a signing bonus to prospective employees. Now, we've never done that, but the board had authorized that previously. And, and right now, I've got a good friend, he's an old guy like me, that's super down in Marshalltown. And those are the areas there at the bottom of the screen there that they're paying $5,000 signing bonuses for anybody to hire in any of those areas. And that's just, that's just the standing rule for the next couple of years.
Wow, did that help?
Well, they're just getting started.
Oh, they're just getting started.
Yeah, they just started in last. Yeah, they just started in last month, or earlier this month, maybe, within the last few days. But that's what they're trying to do, and Marshalltown's a good-sized school. They've got some challenges, they've got a diverse population.
Huge.
Uh, not that that's, not that that's a problem, but sometimes it's, could be a turnoff for some people, whether it should be or not.
They've had some gang issues down there, some, you know, drug problems.
It's everywhere.
And we have the.
Well, yeah.
It is, it's.
They say it's connected to that.
Retirement, like they just did on.
Oh, yeah.
For those.
That helps.
Absolutely. We've been doing things like our early retirement policy, so we can get on these things as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Uh, also, we have done major changes in our SCOT salary schedule. If you remember, six years ago, our base pay was thirty-four, now it's forty-four, uh, where we went from below the state average to well above the state average, and we need to continue to be competitive like that. But uh, I would like to ask the board tonight, what would you think about offering five thousand dollar hiring bonuses to the special education, career, tech ed, and science positions? Now, I'll say right from, right from the outset here, that our business manager has concerns, because we don't have, this is not in the budget, this is not part of our plan.
That's what I was just gonna ask, if we can afford it. I don't think that any of us would be opposed if we had the money and it was there to do it.
We've already said that we can do it, which, or previously, three years ago.
We said we're prepared to.
Allowed to.
We're allowed, yeah, that's what I'm saying, we're allowed to, so this is the stuff we want to right now.
Right. And, and you just said we were above the state average?
For teacher salaries, beginning teacher salaries.
Okay.
That doesn't give us any guarantee to get teachers.
Right. So have we advertised for those three at all?
They are, they are posted. We have an app for career and tech ed. It's not somebody that's fully licensed in career and tech ed.
Perfect.
But we do have an app for that.
They have experience in tech.
So, yes. Uh, you know, actually, of the three, that's the one that's of least concern to me.
Yeah.
Because we have other options. I mean, when we need science, what are we gonna do? We got, the kids need science, and yes, they're accredited, you know, need science.
That's deep science.
Uh, but career and tech ed, we do have their other options. Right now, that career and tech is for our wood shop. Do we have to have wood shop? Would it be a travesty if we had all that expensive equipment in shop for welding and metals and wood, and we had nobody to teach those classes? Yeah, that'd be a real shame. But could we stay accredited by looking at another vocational area? We could.
I guess my question to all of you is, we pay a signing bonus this year, and what assures that we won't be hiring that same position a year from now with another five thousand dollar signing bonus? I mean, is it a perpetuating problem that, that doesn't resolve itself? I, I, I think the answer to my own question is, once you have somebody here, you gotta figure out ways to make them want to stick here.
Sign-on bonus.
Well, you gotta also.
No, I know, it actually has the opposite effect. In, in, in my field right now, we're, we're struggling too, as bad if not worse than teachers. A lot of cities, departments, whether county, cities, whatever, are offering hiring bonuses. It's a big deal right now. But I will tell you, it's upsetting veteran officers on those departments. They got hired five years ago, where was their five thousand dollar sign-on bonus when they got hired? You know, that puts that first-year person maybe making more than they are that first year, if you include that sign-on bonus. So there can be some backlash on doing that with your current employees.
Well, there already was, I think, when salaries went up, right?
Right.
With the, with the older.
Oh, yeah, of course it was.
But, but this one is a true, the new person gets it, and the person that's been here for even two years can get it.
I think we're seeing that across every profession.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, they're hiring, hiring bonuses in the medical profession, law enforcement.
They're throwing it, everybody's throwing it out there trying to get.
It's a bad.
They're doing, I mean, they're doing moving expenses now for law enforcement. If you come, they'll do moving expenses for you. Um, multiple hiring bonuses with caps. I, I just saw one today, I was looking through them, ten thousand dollar hiring bonus. It's not a big community. I don't know where they're coming up with money for ten thousand dollar hiring bonus, but they're offering it, so.
I think most manufacturers are already doing.
Yeah. Let me give you the opposite.
That'll make it right, huh?
It does make it right.
So to, to Gary's point about, you know, you get them on, but then what is to say that next year they're not there? Could you, could you offer, like, if they're there for three years, do a five thousand dollar incentive?
You could. We, uh, if you notice, if you look back up at that, what our handbook says, it says we, we reserve, the board reserves the right to pay a recruiting bonus. We also reserve the right to pay a bonus to current employees for the purposes of retaining.
Retention.
And hard-to-replace positions, so you, you, that's a better, that's a better angle.
It is. And then specifically, this is different than me hiring a police officer, because this is a specific targeted area to keep our accreditation.
Right.
We're saying, those are the three that we're looking at, only those three, not any other general education, you know, not, not, not third, third grade, you know, not teaching high school English. No, we're focusing on those because those are especially difficult to hire. And I think that limits our exposure, honestly, and we can make that argument. You know what? You know, we can get a new English teacher, we can get a new, a, a, a new teacher for, for sixth grade, a lot easier than we can get a new science or special ed teacher, because we just can't find them, they're, they're wired out there. They're out there, but they're already working someplace.
That's not good.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
You're starting to put value on positions. I don't know, that's a good way to do that.
I just, I guess I struggle with it all, you know? Why are we at this point in education?
It isn't, it isn't just us, no. If it's just us, like I was saying, let's not evaluate what we're doing wrong, but it's everywhere. And um, I think about it a lot because what are we doing wrong that people don't want to teach anymore? I remember those people wanted to teach.
War on education is a big part of it. I mean, there's ribbon some people out, but.
Oh, yeah, it's a combination that I can think of. Some teachers are so frustrated because of all of the paperwork and all of the things that have nothing to do with what they consider to be their job of teaching students, one of the issues. Another issue is that the community doesn't respect them anymore. There used to be respect. Parents don't respect the teachers anymore.
I think that's the biggest.
So much ugliness between parents against the teacher.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't have the, the Mr. and Mrs. Respect that we used to have.
You're very right.
There is so much of that stuff going on, so why would you go and take a job for forty-three thousand or forty-four thousand dollars a year, where you could go out and make sixty thousand dollars a year and not have to put up with all the, the crap?
Which is why those positions are short, those career and tech ed. If you've got, if you've got construction skills, if you've got metalwork skills, if you're a welder, you can make a heck of a lot more in those areas. And if you're science, you could be working at science labs, you could be working at ethanol plants, those kinds of things, and be making a lot more money.
Lots more.
Well, if you wanted to drop one out of that list, career and tech ed would be the one to remove.
How long have these been advertised for, posted?
Since January one.
So we've not had a big, big showing, or, we don't have much time invested yet.
No, we don't. And uh, yeah, we, do we have to do it now? No, uh, because my experience is January is a lousy time to hire. The, the young people are just not looking at the job market yet. I would say February is not a great time to hire. Uh, the hot time is March and April.
But, but there's nothing wrong with having an April.
No.
Nothing wrong with that, you know? Because somebody might spike a fire with somebody and says, hmm, there's a place that can use me right now, you know? And wouldn't it be nice to be going into the end of, end of my college courses knowing I have a job in January?
Yeah.
You know?
I mean, I, I just, I, you know. What's the strategy, guys? I think he's, he's proposing a strategy. I think the question is, do we have an alternate strategy that we want to propose to make sure that next year we have a science teacher and we have a special ed teacher?
Yeah, I would like, I would say, I think it's a great idea. I think something needs to happen along those lines, but I'd like to keep the teachers here for a certain amount of time. So I, I would say be here for three years, so that we're not in the same position hiring this again next year, paying five thousand dollars out again.
Well, how about it spreading it over time?
Or, or.
You can go to, I'd say raise it to six thousand, two thousand per year is the signing bonus, but you only get it paid at the end of each year, for the first three.
I, I'm just saying, you build in some time in the position.
But if you negotiate.
And then in the meantime, maybe we don't want them.
Yeah.
Guess what?
Good point.
Other industries.
They're typically, you know, they're, they're, they're not permanent teachers immediately.
You don't get your sign-on bonus immediately with a lot of industries, you know, you gotta be here six months.
You have to get through at least your probationary period with most of them, whatever, and then.
What's it, two years probationary?
Three.
Three, probationary. So for three years, they may not get their signing bonus. I, I, I'm just saying, we need to be strategic about making sure we get those good teachers that want to come here.
I agree. I also don't know if this is, I think that if you tabled this and we talked about it next month, to see if there's more people that have come in, more applicants, and then, you know, I think in, in, if we haven't, then it's absolutely, and do it. I like the idea of the six thousand and spreading it out.
I really like that.
I do like that idea. You earned your keep today.
Well, I don't know about that.
I do too, but I also want to be able to keep the existing teachers.
Yeah, yeah, well, then they can take up, if, if they get their credentials in special ed or science, they can get it too.
But what about those special ed and science teachers right here? We don't want them to leave. Do they get the same thing?
No.
Tough spot.
Yeah, but see, they're only getting, most of those people are already getting higher salaries to begin with. But we obviously usually, all these people that come in here that have previous experience, we put them in the level of, 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 based on their experience. They get salaries accordingly.
And I think that's across the board, and I think, you know, all industries are seeing that with, you're bringing in someone who's making, you know, thirty bucks an hour, and I've been there for twenty-five years and I'm only making twenty-eight bucks an hour.
Right.
That, you know, or twenty-five.
I've heard that at home, too.
It's why I'm glad people don't have salaries and they think they're.
I think that's, that's very common, and I, so I think you do see that frustration, I don't care what, like you said, veteran officers who are, you know.
But they're not quitting because, you know, they're grumbling because of it.
And a lot of them, they look at the retirement benefits of it, and that they're already vested in that part.
That's true.
And they grumble about it.
We need to continue to push our wages up long-term.
I think.
We need to keep that going.
That's really important.
Yeah.
But you know, when we get two and a half percent increase.
I know, I see that, we're, we're tying our hands.
What the heck are they doing to us?
Yes.
What are our knows in shop class?
Low, very low. Our shop teacher touches twenty-one students all day long.
That's sad.
Seven periods, seven periods of construction and twenty-one kids. Now, some, some of the, there might be a kid taking two different, two or three different periods, but still totally twenty-one students.
There's a reason for that.
Yep.
I mean, and, and it's not anybody's fault, it's societal. When I was in, in high school and shop class, I worked for Clarence Trix. I worked for Gordon Morrison, the body shop. And, and I worked down at Roan at the Flexman Shop.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I had various jobs that pertain to that. Um, and there was quite a few of us in that class. I mean, there really were, between, between wood shop and, and, and metal shop. And those places don't exist anymore. So there's, you know, even if a kid has, has a, a, an ability or a desire to do some of those things, um, when he does go to shop and he does learn this stuff, where does he go? Garner's the closest place, well, Clarion, but today's uh situation is, well, they put a kid that's sixteen years old in the floor. I don't know. I mean, you could, I ain't blocking Clarence Trix, but he wore a diaper, he didn't care, as long as, as long as you could do what he wanted done, you know, but you don't have that anymore.
Only yelled at, huh? Only yelled at.
Oh, he yelled at, that's all right, hey. Hey, there's an education in that, too.
No, I know, Clarence, Clarence could be.
He only were smarter than most people I ever had yell at me. He waited till everybody was on break, and then he did it.
Yeah.
Because then he got everybody's attention.
I don't know, guys, what do you think? I, I don't know what to do.
I think we should revisit it next week. If we don't have any more applicants, and then, then I think we have to make.
Put a blow for them.
Yeah.
Were you wanting something now?
No, doesn't have to be.
I'm good with that.
I, because this is not gonna be a hot season right in January. February twenty-fourth, it's gonna start heating, that's what's such picking up.
Well, we'll have another meeting, but then.
Yeah. Our next meeting is February twenty-fourth. But then, very next week, we're in uh March, and that's gonna be the hot season.
We gotta be ready to go.
Well, we will be.
I'd be on agreement with table on it for next month. In the meantime, you're gonna help with some fantastic ideas on.
Real good.
Figure this out, right?
We'll continue to work at it. Next page has to do with vocational agriculture. Uh, pardon me, not vocational agriculture, vocational education or career and tech ed. Now, by state law, we have, there are six strands. If you see them up there, there's an egg strand, a computer strand, that second one without the box checked is a computer strand. Uh, the next one is basically your shop strand, then there's a health sciences strand, human services strand. Uh, we use our family and consumer sciences for that human services strand, uh, with the idea that they're learning food service skills for the food industry. And then finally, the business and finance and marketing strand for like biz ed. Uh, we have to have four of those areas covered. We have to have at least three sequential units, meaning a kid can take that, that track for three of the four years of high school, and they could basically get trained to help them on their way in the career field. Now, we've got it covered with the traditional way we've been doing it, with Debbie Barkla in ag, David Butler doing shop, Wendy Mike's doing family and consumer science, and Deana Manega doing school business. Do we have to add that configuration? No. I said, for example, David Butler uh, uh, is leaving in shop, but do we have, we've got a ton of money invested in shop equipment, but do we have to have a shop teacher? No, not to stay accredited this way. There are other options available for us. Uh, for instance, it is conceivable that if you saw Kelly's report, Deana Manega is, you know, the old time business teacher, was teaching shorthand.
Yeah.
And was teaching accounting and some other things. Yeah, I think. And that's not the modern business teacher, and Deana Manega's classes, she still does the accounting, but she's moved a lot over into computers. It is conceivable that Deana could do two different tracks. She could do a business ed track with her accounting and so forth, she could also do a computer track, and we could stay accredited that way. Uh, there are other options available for us. Uh, and one of those is we can just tie in with uh, like, down in Eagle Grove, there's a career center in the old armory down in Eagle Grove. I've been reluctant to get involved in it because it's so far away, and we've got a pretty good shop here with David Butler. But theoretically, we could send kids down to Eagle Grove to that, and they could get trained in some very good skills that are run by Iowa Central Community College. Uh, so that's an option for us. Uh, another option is that if you look up a little higher, there are health sciences. Uh, we have a hospital in town, and uh, it is possible that we could put together a curriculum that could support people that want to go into the health sciences industry, that uh, kids that want to learn certified nurse assistant and some other areas. Uh, now, we would probably need the assistance of a community college to get that pulled off, and uh, and an official in our area that's supported by NIAC suggested, you should talk to Iowa Central Community College, because they do a great job of teaching health classes remotely. And he said, don't tell anybody I told you that.
Yeah, right.
But, you know, and maybe that would be something that would play well in Belmont, where the hospital is our major employer. Uh, anyway, an idea I had was to advertise an additional position of a computer and information sciences teacher in case we couldn't hire a shop teacher. Now, do we have to go that route? No, we don't. I mean, like I said, we could potentially have Deana cover that. Uh, that's a possibility.
Do some of her class offerings already cover that?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so we were already.
Yeah, you just saw that list, you saw that, she's doing desktop publishing and Microsoft, yeah, all that stuff, yeah.
And that would fall under the arts, communication, information systems?
The very top one, yes, the, the, your second to the top. Communic- arts, and I don't know what arts is, but yeah, arts, communications, and information system, basically it's called information system, supposedly graphic arts.
It's supposed to be graphic arts and music.
That's what I'm guessing. I'm wondering if it's that, yeah.
But that would fall under, Deana's already doing that, right? Yearbook stuff?
Yeah, yeah, some, yeah. So I was going to ask the board if they'd be interested in me advertising for a computer teacher, and I did that in the past once and got nothing for that.
I was going to say, I don't know that it's going to hurt anything if you.
Advertise it, but we can fall back on what we just discussed. I'd go for it, I'd try that.
I would too.
Okay, put it out there.
Okay, can I ask the board to motion to approve that? Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Close.
I think that's a really good track to have.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
Smart thinking.
Well, we're behind because the state's got a computer standards and we're not coming up to speed on that either.
I would think the health sciences could be a really good area. My daughter got her CNA in high school, she got it through. Then she went home and I, and a lot of those.
She looked at hers from NIAC.
Right, a lot of them are offering that for. Iowa Central and others, there are a lot of places we're offering all that stuff for free now.
Yeah. Although trying to recruit too.
I had someone in the public asking me yesterday, why do we not do more with NIAC? Why are they not coming down here to do more with us? I didn't have a good answer for him, but.
We've just been a little too remote from Mason City for them to want to come awfully down here.
Right.
What happened to the, wasn't there going to be an industrial program of some sort in Sheffield or something?
Yeah, there was, uh, there, there is. I don't have any forecast of when that's actually going to be operational. The original, well, first off, it, two years ago, it was going to be in Cal, it was going to be in Latterbrooke.
Yeah, that's right.
And then that never came to fruition because, uh, Suca wanted it in Sheffield and said they pony up big bucks to put it there, and supposedly there's something going in over there, but it's not ready to go, so I don't have a forecast on that yet.
We're going to hold on to bonus though, right, for that?
Yes.
Till next time.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll make a decision.
Okay.
Uh, elementary education?
Okay. We were fully staffed in our elementary classrooms. The board last year voted to let me hire one additional person. And then we had a late resignation. And, uh, and we, by the way, as the hiring season wound down, we stopped hiring that extra position. And we anticipated that one extra person could fit in with our elementary computers tag position. And then when we had late resignation, why then, we took that person and plugged him right in an elementary classroom, and our elementary classroom was fully staffed this year. So that worked out very well. I was wondering if the board would consider allowing me to advertise and hire two elementary positions this year. Right here from the start of the season with the idea that we're going to get some turnover in the elementary, and we'll have two people, we'll have two of the best young people coming out of college ready to plunk in there in some of those vacancies that we experienced.
Absolutely.
I like that. It's the same as what we did in the forest, I forgot too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It saved us last year. I think it's a great idea.
Kind of helped save us last year.
It did, it did.
Anybody want to motion to, hire two, to cover? Second?
Second.
Ryan? Any discussion?
Good plan, good plan. Let's see what Al wants, just, just pull.
Right, no bonus. Like ordinary, yeah, just go.
We discussed the bonus and we thought that, that, that might be pushing it to, you know.
It's more of a cushion.
We didn't, we didn't like the idea of a bonus for those.
Right.
It seemed to be going really well down there in elementary right now.
It is, we're going very well.
Any other discussion?
That's my, that's my, um, that's my ask on that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Most in carries. Legislative update?
Well, I'll call your attention to top of page two. As you're all aware, it's Governor Reynolds has ads running all the time on television about, talking about how kids need freedom of choice in their education. Meanwhile, with inflation running 8 to 10%, Governor Reynolds has proposed 2.5% increase in school budgets or $83 million. Meanwhile, she has proposed $106 million this year alone for educational savings accounts, and that's the first of three years of those installments. So by the end of three years, that's going to be $350 million. Senator Guth, meanwhile, had an article in yesterday's paper, our local paper, saying that these vouchers, these education scholarships, will not affect rural education. I'm here to tell you, it's affecting us right now. If they're cutting back on education funding, so they can put a big chunk of money into, uh, into private schools, that's hurting small school education all across the state.
Because what if that number was 189 million that we're dividing up for schools instead of just the 83 million?
Wouldn't that be amazing?
I mean, if we're going to come up with 106 million.
And even then, that's not going to be up to the rate of.
It won't get us to up to the question.
Right, no, 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 but it would at least. It would at least make me feel a little better.
Yeah. Meanwhile, one of the things they've been purporting is, hey, every time a kid leaves a public school and goes into a private school, the school gets to repay $1,200. Have you heard that?
I did.
Yeah, I did.
Well, that's categorical funding that's not available to the private school, and that's not education. We can't use that for education. That's $1,200, that's strictly categorical, that we can't use to educate kids.
So it does nothing for our kids?
Really doesn't. I mean, it's like teacher salary supplements and the teacher's benefit, but we can't, we can't hire a position using teacher salary supplement money.
Don't you think that this is going to blow up in their face? Because number one, all those people that spoke to them the other night, huge amount of people are in favor of it.
No, over 60% of Iowa's opposed it.
Those are all voters. Now, but to me, to me, the key to this is, you keep those people thinking, so the next time there's an election, you wipe these people out of here.
But, uh, meanwhile, there were some people that spoke in favor of it that were from out of state.
Yeah.
Makes perfect sense.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Who pays for that?
Well, but I tell you, it's a full court press down there at Des Moines. I got a friend that's a superintendent over near Cedar Falls. And his Republican senator got elected saying he was a no vote. Uh, when he went down there, he, why, he immediately started getting the full court press. And this superintendent really thinks, I think they swung him to a yes vote, and I've been holding his speech to the fire, and said, you promised your constituents you were a no. But he's feeling the pressure that he's got to buck him.
I don't got that.
Spineless jellyfish.
Well, Mark Thompson did say in his article that I read today that he was going to contact all the superintendents in this district. Have you heard from Mark?
Yes, he has asked for information. He said, anything you want me to know before we make this decision?
Well, I thought we told him that we thought before. That was pretty clear.
I was going to try to get, to get that super board together.
Yes, I know, we talked, I was wondering.
And I don't know.
It's a little, this is moving so fast.
This is moving so fast, I don't think I can pull it off. I mean, I was trying to get together with Superintendent Eagle Grove, and he, he got COVID and he wasn't available.
Yeah, it's just, it's not looking.
Well, here, okay, somebody explain this to me. They're going to give them this money, that's, I guess, all along with it. Who's paying to transport these kids?
That's another question because they get $7,000 per kid, and we're required by federal law, federal court order, that we've got to provide transportation for those kids. Now, if they get all $7,000, theoretically, a sliver of that goes for transportation, we've got to pull you up out of our money, well, we don't have private schools, but those schools that have private schools, they're going to have to take that money from their kids and provide transportation for the private schools that are getting their sliver and keeping it just for their education.
But in our district, if you're going to go to Newman, for example.
Or St. Ed's, that's.
That's, yeah, St. Ed's, that's, that's on you. It's grandpa and grandma are going to transport or mom or dad or whoever.
So guess what? We just get less money. That's what I bowled onto. We, here, in this district, end up with less money. Because we get 2.5 instead of what we should be getting, it's about, about 5%, should have been a good round number this year.
And I looked at the Newman tuition, and it's not as much as what they're proposing each student gets. On top of those, kids each get scholarships as well, from different, um, people that have donated, and it's, it's, yes. I'm sure some of the other schools are higher tuition, some bigger schools, private schools, but I looked at that one specifically, because it's closer to us. There was some Belmont folks that were having a discussion about it on Facebook over the weekend. It was a really good discussion. It was informational and some good thoughts and, and information was passed around, but yeah, it's, it's, it's hard.
Well, one of the things, one of the buzzwords is, if we get these vouchers in place, then the public schools have got to really up their game if, if they want to keep their students, and this is going to improve education for the state of Iowa. And I'm here to tell you, folks, I don't have anybody in this school system that's holding back until they get better competition.
Well, you can't get enough funding. Oh, yeah, yeah, if you gave me more money.
I'll do a better job for you.
I don't know, I don't know if that's true. Most of these teachers are giving it all. I believe that.
Well, and it's the same story too. No regulations for the private schools. You know, they don't have the same regulations. They don't have to accept any of our specialized kids. That's going to change the way that how the performances are.
That's enormous.
Huge piece, yeah.
Because that's going to need to be supported by the ADEAs, and the ADEAs, how the ADEA is going to support that in private schools?
Right, and how are minorities going to, how's that, I mean, you're not going to get as many minorities in private schools. It's never going to be the same way for a public school.
I don't think it's been thought out real well. I really don't. There's, there's too many holes in it. You know, all they want to do, all they want to do, really, and, and this started with Branstad. And that's the story of public schools. They didn't buy anything other than that. You know, he was here in Belmont, in the auditorium and running a gap. And I asked him, you know, what was wrong with taking a look at how we used to educate kids in the past when we were number one in this, in the nation, or two, or three? And he told me, and I spoke to him and said, uh, I believe we're 18th now in the nation. Well, I don't think 18th is too bad. Genius. I'm serious, it was, it was, it was ridiculous the way he answered that.
It's probably gotten better since, since China.
I'm not going to say this stop at the end of the meeting, we're all going home, spun up about it.
This kid that was working for him that just graduated Harvard from over at Doc and Y at that, at night. He says, uh, I don't think Mr. Branstad understood what you were saying. Do you think? Well, I don't know, seems to me that education, public education is at war with the state, with the state. So we need to figure something out better than this, and I think that one of the better things to do is remember who voted for it. And when it comes time to vote again, make sure that there's a, there's a concerted effort to get that person voted off.
Okay, anything else?
No.
That you want to clarify about?
I think I've got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, it, it saddens me so much to think that they're virtually guttering, gutting what I believe to be a really, the best we can offer for public education in the state. And we all know that the driver of all of that has been ethics, standards, and funding. And you take away the funding, what happens is the rest, the standards start to deteriorate.
Just goes away.
How, how can you continue to maintain a high-level educational institution if you don't have all three? And, and they seem to not care. And they're kowtowing to those people that are, that, that seem to like these private schools. And I, I, I don't have anything against private schools. But I also know that most of those have huge foundations that provide money for operations and for scholarships. Because they provided money and scholarships for my granddaughter and my grandson to go to, to a Catholic school up in, in Wisconsin. And so they could get by with really cheap tuition, at least for the first eight years. And now she's in the public school. They both are. They're both in public schools. And frankly, I have no reason to believe that they got a better education in private school. It was more individualized, yes, because there were fewer students in the class. But the teachers were getting paid exactly one half of what a teacher was getting paid in a public school.
Yeah.
Because they, they did it basically for free. And many of them had no benefits besides. They didn't even have benefits to offer them in the, in the Catholic school. The reality was, they just wanted to be teachers. And they were willing to dedicate that to the Catholic school, but not to the public school. Whatever that is.
That's where their heart was.
It was, and, and I believe in that.
It's fine.
That's, this whole country has the ability to do your private education as you want. But why should I have to pay for that out of my tax dollars? That's always been my problem. Even though if I had a kid that I wanted to go to a private school, I would make sure I would find a way to get that kid to go to that private school. But I don't think that I have expected Jim or any of you to pay, pay to send my kid to a crock-heel school. Whatever denomination or makeup or design that it may have. Now, one little side note, these charter schools. You know, they opened that door up about three years ago. You know how many charter schools we have in Iowa today? Two. Yep, not biggies. And now they're going to propose a new one in Des Moines, and guess who it's going to be run by? A big conglomerate out of Chicago. They're going to be the administrators that run this new charter school in Des Moines. And so guess who's going to get the big chunk of cash going to the charter schools in Des Moines? People in Chicago. And all I can say is, when we start selling out to people outside of our own babywir to educate our kids, we're in deep duh-duh. Anyway, nothing like it.
What's the target on public school for? Obviously, our administration, why is there a target? Why is there a target on public school?
Costs a lot of money.
Well, it is, to the, to the state taxpayer, a lot of money.
But you take, we seen this coming, and it has been that many years ago, when they took away homeschool kids. And I got three kids, three grandkids that were homeschooled and did quite well. But their mother also was a teacher. Makes a difference. When they took away standards. When they took away accountability.
No testing.
You don't, you don't take your kids into, to the Department of Ed and have them test out for that semester. We're going to see, goodbye, we don't do it. You're doing a wonderful job.
The money, the money's still there, they're going to have to vouch for, for private schools, so it's not money.
Oh, I think money, I think it's money. I think money's going somewhere.
I think it's, I think it's control, that I think they want to whittle down, I think they can't control all the school districts that are in the state. If they can shrink, I mean, actually, increase the size of the school districts, but shrink down how many there are, I think they think they'll have more control. That they can put their thumb over the whole educational system. And right now, they can't. Because they got little school districts like us that will fight back and say, no, we're not going to do it that way. We're going to do it this way. You know, and they can't pass enough laws to take that control. So I think they're trying to do it through time, through just making all these little school systems, us, Eagle Grove, Garner, make them, all these school districts combine into bigger districts, and then they control the money better on those bigger districts, and they put their thumb and squeeze them better.
And something with though, Ryan, is the culture war that's out there, that is just sure that American society is going to hell in a handbasket, and the public schools are the root of the problem. As an example, all these schools that have litter boxes in the classroom because the kids want to identify as animals rather than humans. And and there are people that are up in arms, I mean, we've had the senator in Port Dodge stood up on the floor of the Senate and decried the schools in Iowa that had litter box in the classroom. He later had to admit, there's not a single flipping classroom in the state of Iowa that's got a litter box in it.
So people believe that.
That's right.
I have had people in this town ask me that same question.
If they're in our school.
We have.
Yes, I have had that same question asked.
So, you remember five years ago when, uh, we were put, when, uh, we were putting on the play Harvey in the, here, in our, in our theater?
Yes, I remember that.
And it was the same month that we were putting on a Bronco Pride celebration over at the elementary, and they were just sure it was, uh, Harvey was about Harvey Milk, the gay mayor of San Francisco.
Yes, yes, yes.
And it was gay pride.
It was gay pride. And put Harvey Milk. Yes, I remember.
Back to your point with the litter boxes, I've heard the same thing. People think that's real.
Oh, absolutely.
That's giving schools a black eye. Terrible, yeah, and that's why.
But they won't take it upon themselves to come to the door and say, hey, can, can I look around? I want to see this litter box.
Absolutely, that's right.
It's fine.
They get that in their mind.
And it's real.
And it's real. Deception is reality.
I think the overarching issue here, though, has little to do with.
Furries? Has little to do with furries?
Actually, I think it has to do with the promise. the promises that certain politicians have made to their constituents that we can run government and education a lot cheaper. And by simply taking money out of the system, we will find ways to give you a tax cut or a tax break. And so you don't have to pay that much for education anymore. Instead, we'll have kids poorly educated, but what's the big deal? It's not our problem. Cause we saved you a lot of money either in sales tax, property taxes, or income taxes. And that's the sales gimmicks that's being used to convince so many people that are.
They shouldn't be a little more honest with that.
Oh, well, they wouldn't vote for it then. They knew what was really going on.
And they need to demonize public schools.
In order to get that done.
Otherwise, the parents won't vote for it.
Exactly right.
All you have to do is hear this stuff on the radio and believe it and hear it. Well, then that must be every public school. Yeah, they're evil. I mean, that's how it happens. I get it. Every year, Fidel Capo is, is a scholarly, uh, research organization that, that, uh, researches things about public education. Every year they run a survey. And they ask two questions. They have for the last thirty years. One of the questions is, what do you think of American edu-, public schools across the nation? For a number of years now, fifteen, twenty years, the average American gives, the average public school, well, what would you give the average public school in America? The average American gives it C minus to D plus.
Really?
But they also ask the question, how about your local school? What grade do you give it? D plus to A minus. Now, think about that. If that's an average in the entire nation, those two grades aren't gonna be the same. They should be. Yes, they should be. We've lost confidence in our public, the parents have lost confidence in the public schools.
But they don't have enough confidence in themselves to educate their kid. They're gonna ship that kid off to a private school and start the whole pandemonium all over again.
Well, but you see when that kid adds up to a private school, okay, come out and they have to come back to us.
Well, the best part is, the best part is when they do have trouble with their child in their, in their fancy private school. They gotta drive sixty miles minimum to have a visit.
Yeah. Yeah. I saw that happen in Wisconsin.
Schools too. It's a lot easier, I think. I mean, they don't want you there. They just tell you leave. Whereas we have to take steps to remediate.
Happened to my granddaughter's school.
I thought you were gonna say happen to your granddaughter. I was like, oh, she must be like her grandpa.
No, no. They have a couple of kids that are acting up. Says, you're outta here. Get the hell outta here. Get outta here. We don't need you. We don't want you in our school. I don't care if you pay the tuition. Just leave today. Out. They had to go find another school to go to another public school, to be honest with you.
We need to somehow restore confidence back in our public schools.
Yeah. Well, that's what I kept saying. I was, I was raised on a good public education. I went to University of Iowa, went to Northwestern University. I got the best education that this, this state could offer. And I, I'm, I'm proud to have been educated here. And I still feel that way about my own children and about the children that go through this school system. We're offering them the very best that we can give them. And to think that you need to now punish us as public educators, we as public educators, by giving us less money to run a system that takes a lot of money and energy to keep hardworking staff focused on the teaching of my kids is a dis-, it's a disgrace to, to this country, as far as I'm concerned. And I am so, so disappointed in the politicians who just suck up to the trough and say, oh, yeah, that's what we gotta do. Give away the money. Don't give it to public kids. They're the bad guys. So.
It's really frustrating. It's really frustrating.
It is.
It is. Because, um, I, like yourself, Mary, I feel pretty strong about this school system and what we did for the kids here. You know, and, uh, in my, in my mind, Iowa, the last, well, since I graduated high school, we've done nothing but try and do better here. You know, and then we get where were those two ding dongs?
Well, it's kind of, every one of you are here because you wanted to see the, the school district better. I'm here for pay. Yeah. We're gonna double your pay for next year.
All right.
Enjoy the Thursday night.
Yeah, right. We just kill our Thursday nights. But no, absolutely. We all are focused on doing so much better for our kids. But don't take away the one really important jewel we have, and that is finances. I mean, that's insane.
That's how they get bigger. That's how they catch your throats.
Yeah.
Good teachers, you gotta pay them a fee bill and take away the money. Well, I just hope, hope this all turns out. Those people that were sixty percent against this whole thing, remember that when it's time to vote.
Cause we, you know, anything that's done in the legislature, they can be changed.
That's exactly right.
They could reverse that whole process and say, guess what? We don't have to fund private education. But it's really hard to do once you get it started.
Yeah, it is.
Get the, get the, who was it? Said they get the elephant, gets his foot in the door and all of a sudden you can't get him out of the tent. Was it you, Dan?
Camel's nose under the tent.
Oh, the camel's nose under the tent cupboard. Once you get his nose in the tent, you can't get him out anymore.
Okay. Let's talk about filling the school board vacant.
Oh, we got more to talk about?
The rule is that, uh, the board gets a rather tight timeline. You've got thirty days to fill a vacancy on, on this school board. The board has to, uh, basically publish a notice that they intend to fill the vacancy by appointment. And then the public has an opportunity to force it to election if they wanted to. Uh, usually that doesn't happen. Uh, but that, that is a potential possibility.
Couple of quick ques-, questions. When will this school, we have, we have a full slate of, of directors here. When does the vacancy occur?
At the moment, the, uh, board member resigns.
Okay. And so we have to be proactive in figuring out when is that gonna happen so that we can, I have a couple of suggestions that we can make.
It'll be at the next board meeting.
Okay. Now we know. That's what I need.
I'm the problem. It's me.
It's not your problem. You're the problem? You're not a problem, Heather.
Yeah, we knew that all along.
No, 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 no. Okay. So the next board meeting, we've got thirty days effectively, is what you say. So we need to be proactive and simply say, can we put something out publicly saying, people from her district who are interested in being a director, would they submit a one-page application to our board president?
But you're at large, right?
Oh, well, anybody, anybody in the whole district. Basically, a couple of letters.
Saying why you want the position.
Tell me where you want it. You know, what's your background? And then I think what happens is we feed that to a small committee. We've got seven of, of three people. And then they come with a recommendation of two or three to the board and it's pick one and mark roll it. Is that an idea? I've done, we've done that.
Possibility.
We've done that in city council before.
Another possibility is, and some school boards have done this, uh, there were two candidates for that seat.
Yeah.
And one was, uh, actually campaigned for the position and got a number of votes. Uh, some boards have decided to point, appoint that ultimate candidate too.
Did somebody run against you?
Mark.
Mark Flack.
Well, I think we were all at large. I think it was you, me, and.
Yeah, we all.
And you two were the top contributors.
Yeah, okay.
I'm really sorry, but if I had known, that's what I don't know.
I forgot about that. You're right. Well, Mark would be the one I'd ask if he would be willing to serve about your term.
Well, he is trained.
Yes. They'll have to start over. I like, I like working with Mark. You know, Heather's been wonderful, but you know, if Mark would say yes, somebody wanna approach you? If you're in for, in for it, you know, that's an alternative or we can just open it up. I don't, agency or asking.
I don't know. I, I have no say in this, obviously, cause I'm the one that's leaving, but I think it would, um, you know, the last year that I've been on the school board, um, I've heard a lot of people in the community be like, I'm very interested in running now because of decisions that have been made. And I think it'd be really interesting to see what you guys would get for people that are actually interested in, um, you know, I think it's a, I've learned a ton. So if you have people that are interested, I think that it's a really good learning opportunity. Um, do that, but it's not, obviously, clearly not my opinion. I'm, I'm, I'm out of it. So.
I understand.
No, but I like your, I want your input too.
I think that's important. Yeah. We're all still here trying to think through this. Well, what do, what the rest of you think? You like the idea of maybe going to Mark and say, Mark, are you, would you like to come back and serve? Heather's leaving, you know, and we would like to have you back here if you're interested? Then we could appoint him and as soon as she resigns, we could appoint him and then we can run the time of the ten days or one day. With the public has to.
I did, fifteen days.
Fifteen days. And if they either take out papers and say, well, the.
Fourteen days.
Fourteen days. Okay. They give us a petition to have an election, then at that point we have an election. But if they don't, then the appointment will stay. I don't really care.
I don't either. I'm gonna do anything. I, I, I like the idea of giving the, the community a chance to come forward if they want to.
Brian, what do you think?
If they don't, that's fine too. And I, I, I don't know why. I don't know why I think Mark's not interested, but he and I had visited quite a lot of them. And I just got no impression that he was interested. And then he changed his mind. He was all right. He was good to work with.
Oh, yeah, I thought so too.
Yep, he was.
I did.
I get no problems with him at all.
No.
But I also like the idea of if there are several people in this community that are now passionate enough about it that they might wanna run in the future. It'd be nice to start. Yeah, it'd be a nice place to start and maybe see if one of them wanna, if the board wanted me to, I can reach out to Mark and, and see if he's interested. I don't have a problem doing that.
Well, you were the president of the time he was here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he can do both. We can reach out to him if he signs, but then we move to the next.
And then we, then I have our board secretary put something in the, in the paper. Yeah. Give them a drop, drop that deadline to submit their application. You wanna appoint a committee to review them and then make recommendations to the board.
Talk to Mark. Give him two hours to make a decision though.
Yeah, that's it.
Actually, it's more like thirty seconds.
Well, he'll, I think he's definitive. He'll tell you.
Yes. No, he.
Either yes or no.
Yeah.
He won't wish he was here.
No, he won't at all.
So whether they'd be interested or not, we would get, uh, applicants via letter or whatever of intent.
Yeah, but there would be a.
There would be no election then.
No.
No, no, no. We would make the appointment then.
Not unless it's driven by the public for an election.
Uh, if they come within fourteen days, that's how they come to.
Once we make the appointment, see, we have thirty days though after the resignation to make the appointment.
Correct.
So we could do that actually in March. She resigns at the next meeting, wouldn't have until March to make the appointment.
And then after we make the appointment, the public has fourteen days to contest that.
Either, either file an application for election or not.
Good.
Well, what's the, what's the, what's the plan, folks?
Rick's gonna talk to Mark.
Okay. If he says yes.
Then we're good.
Then we're good with him. If he doesn't, then what?
Then we're gonna put, add to paper.
Okay, he's gonna put something in the, in the paper saying, if you're interested in being, serving as a director at large at the Belmont County Community School District for the rest of Heather's term, she, she anticipates resigning shortly.
And you have another two years? Two years.
Two years? Can we appoint for the full two years?
Yeah.
Okay. So that they would get to serve the remainder of her two-year term, the remaining of her term, which is about two years. Then submit a, uh, an application and make it simple, name, address, date of birth, blood type, children, whatever. McKenna will make it up.
McKenna?
McKenna is gonna make it up. Right, McKenna?
Yes.
I knew you would. Make it simple. Don't make it complicated. Cause I hope we know these people that make the application. And then do you wanna have a, a small group review it or not? What do you want? I don't care. Just, I'm just trying to streamline this a little bit.
Yeah, I think it'd be faster.
Oh, do you wanna go come in every night for one night in, in March and?
Oh, no.
I didn't think so.
It also depends on how many apps you have.
Right, right.
Yeah, no, we got in trouble.
If you get eighteen people, yeah, committee might be better. If you have two people, that'd be more my experience. You might get just one, maybe get two. Who knows?
Yeah.
And it might be nice if you had set a small number of people that often, I'd say.
As an entire board, I mean?
Yes.
That's okay with me. Yeah. With, that's all, yeah. Usually what happens is you have a difficult time getting people to say, yeah. That's the real issue.
Referees, teachers, school workers, police officers. Everybody's hard to get in.
Yeah, we got a plan, right?
Yep, yep.
School calendar.
Yes.
Uh, let me just show you the calendar, uh, just this, just getting started. This calendar is based upon what we did the last few years. Uh, and I, this is just an initial first draft. I presented this to the B K E A Teacher Association and also the B K E S A Support Staff Association and asked for their feedback. And they're gonna, and I've heard back from the support staff. I haven't heard back from the teachers. But, uh, we'll, we'll probably come back with a refined recommendation based upon their feedback. Teresa McKenna and I, we, we work year round. We don't really care what calendar looks like. We're here all the time anyway. But, uh, so we'll be very, uh, we'll be very open to what the people that are here just for the hundred eighty days, how they feel about this.
And Martin Luther King's Day is birthday this year. We had school, correct?
No.
No, we had it. So that's what it was.
That's what it was. Yeah. Thank you.
Intendedly, that's what we're planning on this calendar. P D Day on Martin Luther King Day, but just a holiday on President's Day.
Oh, President's Day is a holiday even better.
Yep.
Good thing we just had this conversation about Luther King.
Oh, yeah.
Need to find dates here.
And, uh, one of the, uh, some of the feedback I sometimes get is, why can't we have snow makeup days during the year so we don't have days on the end? But I think this board has dealt with that in the past, that invariably somebody's got plane tickets to Cancun. And even if you say it's a snow day on the calendar, somebody still books their flights to Cancun and then suddenly they say, well, you can't make me come to school that day. I already have my flight booked.
Call that one of your absences.
Yeah, they can go, they can go the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth of December.
You were gonna make the, last year when we talked about this, match up with the neighboring districts?
Yeah, cause we were expecting to have a.
Oh, the Sheffield thing?
Yeah, with the Sheffield thing. And, uh, and I will touch base with some of the neighboring schools, see how they feel about this.
Yeah, no spring break this year. Oh, yeah, there is. It's a whole week.
Yep, whole week this year, a whole week for the coming year too.
Wow.
Part of this. But, uh, this year we got out before Memorial Day. Well, we won't now with snow days. Uh, the original plan was, assuming no snow days, we'd be out before Memorial Day, but this is just saying, oh, throwing up our hands and say, what does it matter? Let's, let's hack in three days at the end after Memorial Day.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other thoughts or input on the schedule?
Feel free, if you have, if you look at this and have, and there's some things you'd like to see in the calendar coming up, let me know.
Motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Second. Everyone who wants to say, you had a conversation up here? Gary's tired. Oh, yeah. It's just so long he's been out of the house in a really long time.
It's hard to keep focused anymore, you know? Plus, I got all excited about that.